All right, good evening, everyone. I will call the February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I will announce that the board did meet an executive session prior to this meeting. We discussed a three litigation matters related to a zoning hearing cases, one personnel matter, and we did not receive any public comment to the Dropbox. With that being said, Mr. Nice, can you please do the roll call?
Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts, Lightcap.
Here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mrs. Chanless.
Here.
Your solicitor, engineer, and manager here.
Thank you very much. We will now move down to the moment of silence. As we do the moment of silence, I think it's fitting that this is the first meeting that we're having since the death of Officer Fitzgerald, where we will be honoring our police officers here in Newtown Township. So I ask everybody, both in this room, those who are watching, that we remember our first responders and the difficult work that they do for us day in and day out. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item five point one, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, Lightcap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section six, public comment for agenda items only. If you have a public comment that you'd like to provide for an agenda item, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and just make sure that microphone's on, Lori.
Lori Whiteman, I live on Meadowview Farm Road, and I'm here with some of my neighbors tonight to thank the board and for your listening to us when we shared our concerns over the meadow and the entrance to it, and also for putting us on the agenda with that motion tonight, so we appreciate that. As you know, our concern, our main concern, is the proximity of our homes on Meadowview Farm Road to the entrance to the preserve and the subsequent parking issues that have arisen. And we believe there is an option that is a win-win for everyone, and that is to move the entrance to the preserve further down the road, and in that way, the parking can go down there as well. And we know that this motion tonight would allow the township engineer and the board to look further into this. And we think that this is a good option, and it allows the township to continue your goals for the preserve while at the same time protecting our privacy and our property values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, thirty-eight thirty-four Meadowview Farm Road.
Any other public comment for agenda items only? Okay. We'll now move down to minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, Lightcap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section eight, presentations. I'll now turn it over to Chief Lund.
Good evening, thank you for the time tonight. I'm going to start with two quick awards. We have a specially graduate award we want to give to Officer Anthony Kind for his completion of K nine school, K nine patrol school and explosive detection school. He completed those through the University of Pennsylvania. Both schools, I think, totaled about twelve weeks. Here's his K nine boy with him, who also completed those four. Thank you. Congratulations. Also have an honorable service award for Sergeant Joe Vandergriff. On Sunday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, the police department was dispatched along with the ambulance to a home in the thirty-two hundred block of Sawmill Road for maternity call. A woman who was thirty-nine weeks pregnant and having contract, contractions less than two minutes apart. Sergeant Vandergriff was the first to arrive and observe that the birthing process hadn't done. Sergeant Vandergriff stepped up, assisted the mother with delivering the baby right there in the home. Those at the scene said that Sergeant Vandergriff's professionalism and years of experience contributed to the calmness of the situation and successful delivery of the baby. For those actions, we present Sergeant Vandergriff with the honorable service. Next, we have our Walt Wolf Award, Community Partner Award. Here tonight, a couple of presentations, Walt Wolf. Walt's been a longtime friend and supporter of the police department. Nobody's been a bigger supporter of our police department than Walt. And in appreciation for his decades of support, we named this award after him. This award recognizes someone who both supports our community and the police department. This year's recipient is Steve Spader. He's a senior vice president of acquisitions and development at Equius Capital Partners. Back in two thousand twenty-one, Steve heard about the possibility of the police department bringing back the K nine unit and knew it would be an asset to our community. When Steve heard of the need to raise money to fund the program, he reached out to his contacts in the community on multiple occasions and was a driving force behind the police department raising over one hundred thousand dollars in donations to bring back the K nine unit. The funds raised cover all the expenses involved in the K nine unit for a period of five years. So in appreciation for the dedicated support to the community and the police department, we would like to present Steve Spader this plaque. Next is our Officer of the Year Award, the Clinton Cunningham Award. Here tonight to help with that is Kelly Cunningham. Also in attendance is Clinton's parents, Tom and Sue Cunningham. Stand up a second.
My boys, my girls have strep throat.
And also Clinton's and Kelly's sons, CJ and Sean. This year's recipient is Officer Dan Strathie. Dan was nominated for this award by his fellow officers. Those that nominated Dan had these things to say about why they felt he was worthy of the award. Dan has shown a great deal of passion for this police department. Dan takes initiative to support the department and his fellow coworkers. He communicates well with others, takes on responsibility, and prioritizes what could benefit his fellow officers. Dan has continued to grow in this profession and has become a better asset to the department. He's highly motivated, hardworking, and eager to better himself in law enforcement. His actions speak louder than his words, which is a trait that many admire. It's a pleasure to work with, with Dan. Dan encompasses all the qualities of a Newtown Township police officer. Dan's knowledge of the job, his commitment to the department, and his consistently positive attitude is something to be admired and respected. Dan has taken on more responsibilities with assisting in the investigation division and also becoming our police association president. Dan always comes to work with a positive attitude. He works hard and doesn't shy away from tackling the big cases. He handles all cases in a professional and thorough manner. He handles all this very well and seems to be very comfortable and knowledgeable in his role here in the police department. Dan also keeps us laughing with his great sense of humor. Dan shows initiative in terms of following up on investigations without being told to do so. He doesn't hesitate to perform extensive work on an incident, which oftentimes calls for the drafting of search warrant or surveillance seizures. He's extremely professional to the public. Also, he's seeking a graduate degree on his own time. He's truly putting forth the effort to make him a long-term asset to this department. And for those reasons, our two thousand twenty-three Officer of the Year is Dan Strath. Want to get a quick picture up front of the officer coming up.
All right. So now we'll move down to section nine, which is the reports. Chief Lund, do you have anything you want to add or supplement to your report? Thank you very much. We have the report from the fire department. I don't believe Chief Everloff has anything that he needs to add or supplement. Mr. Sherritt's Public Works, do you have anything to add or supplement? Mr. Rescheck has nothing to add or supplement. We do have our new finance director here this evening. I don't know if you have anything you want to add or supplement. Perfect. Thank you.
I, I would, I just would note for the board that typically we would be starting our audit coming up in like the next couple of weeks. We will probably be at least a month off, maybe two, when we can get rescheduled. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
Report from the library director, Ms. Crusoe, I don't think she has anything to add or supplement. Move down to the engineer. Our engineer, Mr. Johnson, has been called to testify as an expert witness, so he's out of the state right now or out of the area. His report was provided to us. I don't think there's anything to add or supplement to that. Perfect. We'll move down to the township manager, Mr. Nice.
Yeah, I just would make note that if you recall that we've asked all of our committees to give you goals for the year. The Shetree Commission has submitted their goals to you, and so that you have those before you, and we're continuing to get the other committees to do so. You probably won't get anything from zoning or from planning, but the rest of them are working on them. The other thing that I wanted to make note, and this is important because we actually just found this out today. We're working with Pico and with Miller Brothers, right? Miller Brothers, Rhodes Avenue, probably starting at the end of this week, going for two weeks, and then there'll probably be a break, and another two-week period will be closed from Westchester Pike all the way out to St. Albans Circle. When that's done, while that's being done, we'll be really not letting anybody in off from Westchester Pike for safety reasons. We'll be asking everybody to go around and come in at the circle, at the St. David's Circle side onto Rhodes. A letter's going out to all the residents along Rhodes Avenue, so they know that, and so that everybody will be aware. It'll be from seven in the morning till three P M. each day while they're putting a new gas line down that street. And it's really for the safety of the workers and also the safety of anybody driving down there. And that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the township manager? So now we'll move down to payments. Can I get a motion to consider approving the following escrow payments? Nine hundred and seven dollar escrow release payment to Andrew Matteloni at six thirty-six Golf Club Road for a completed grading project. Two hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents escrow release payment to Astor Minassian at thirty-four eleven Lewis Road for a completed grading project. Six hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cent escrow release payment to Eric Anderson at nine Domining Road for a completed grading project.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ten point two, can I get a motion to approve the following two thousand twenty-two payments that are not on the check register? Newtown Township P card Zoom charges totaling three hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-six cents. Panoni Engineering invoices various totaling eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Dan Tech Engineering invoices Sawmill totaling four thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Mr. Nice, do you want to explain why that is, why it's structured like that?
Versus being on your check register? Yes, these were either charges that we found out about after the checks were cut or ones that had been in question before the checks were cut, and so they, and because it's two thousand twenty-two, we're trying to get everything closed out, and we won't, we don't want to keep bringing two thousand twenty-two charges to you. So we had you approve these tonight. We'll cut the checks, get them issued. But that way we can move forward and get the two thousand twenty-two books closed and move forward getting prepared for the audit.
Any questions for Mr. Nice? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Eleven point one, I will make a motion, I've reviewed the bills, and I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register twenty-two, twenty twenty-two A dated February twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three totaling one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Is there a second? Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register twenty twenty-three A dated February twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three totaling one hundred and eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and ten cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, Lightcap, is there any board discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Section twelve, new business, twelve point one. I get a motion to consider authorizing the township manager to direct the township engineer to design a concept plan for the parking and trail entrances at the Meadow Preserve.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, Lightcap. Mr. Nice, do you want to add anything to this?
No, that just is, this is a part of moving us forward with allowing the public access to the park, but also taking into into the concerns of the folks that live there at Lissabon.
Thank you very much.
Do, I'm sorry, Dan, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a timeline on this of when we can expect, is there, do we have a schedule of when we can expect something back? And I guess, I guess you all had, I guess the neighbors had had an input on something.
Yeah, so we've heard, we've heard from the neighbors several times, but we, what we want to do, at once the engineer, we're going to put together a concept plan. Before we present it to you, we'll probably go back to the neighbors again and just say, here's where we are, taking hopefully into account that, and, and then we would come back to you and say, here's our concept plan. And then I would ask for you to probably approve the project of us going back for a detailed plan on how, what we need to do to do that. So the first thing's going to be just a concept. Does this kind of what we think it works, and then enough of an engineering plan to say we need to remove this and do this, and you know, those kinds of things to make it happen.
Did Panoni give us a, a, a timing for when the neighbors can expect to have a concept plan?
I, we have not gotten a timing. This is giving me the direction to ask him and get started. I haven't even done that yet, so we, we're waiting for you to give us direction. Once we do that, probably at the next meeting, I can give you a timeframe for how long we think.
Just so that they know when to expect to have something back. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, as was alluded to by Ms. Whiteman, I mean, we've had multiple conversations about this. They've all been pleasant conversations, which has been great. But as Stephen just said, this is really just the beginning of this process. We're taking into consideration the comments that have already been made, and the discussions that we already had, but then it'll be open up to a more public process now that we're putting, you know, pencil to paper, if you will. So I appreciate everybody who's been providing input. There'll be continual building on to that as we move forward, but this is, as I said, the beginning of it. So normally I would say you should have done it at the beginning, but if you want to add something, you can add something. I'll, it, well, if it's on, is it on this motion?
Yeah.
I'll let you go ahead, get, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Well, and I don't mean to cut you off, but the whole idea will be, we'll put the concept together. I think I mentioned that we would be reaching back out to the neighbors at that point to review the concept plan. It'll be a, but we'll be reaching out to the whole pub, public as a whole for that purpose to hear about that and make sure we're taking in accommodations for everyone. And then we, before it even comes back to the board for approval, and then they would approve the concept plan, and then we would go from there into design. Again, go back out to the public and make sure there's any more comments based on that, and then finally back to the board for final approval.
Thank you, thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Any other board discussion? Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point two, can I get a motion considered authorizing the township manager to direct the township engineer to investigate the design of a permanent island on St. Albans Avenue at St. Albans Circle? Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, do you want to add anything to this? Be self-explanatory?
Nothing.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point three, can I get a motion authorizing the township manager to direct the township engineer to investigate the use of electric speeds, electronic speed signs on state roads? Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, do you want to add anything?
I would just make note the two main locations that we're looking at initially are where we've had quite a few complaints in regards Gradyville Road in, in the area of Long Langolin. There's a big concern about there where people are entering the highway or entering the road from one of our neighborhood roads onto that road, state road. And then the other is on Goshen Road where there's a curve as you're going Goshen to the, towards the east from two fifty-two, there's a curve there that we've had several times where people have either gone off or had slight accidents there at that corner, and so we're looking at trying to slow traffic down in both of those places.
Perfect. Any comments from the board? Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point four, can I get a motion approving the request from Newtown Edge Mount Little League to install a sign at the entrance of the Little League complex with the, which will be placed on township property? Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, do you want to supplement anything?
Just wanted to make sure the board was aware that this was Uh, just wanted to make sure the board was aware that this was, that the, you know, the Little League was doing this. Uh, I hope you took a chance to look at kind of what the sign's going to look like at that location. I think it's a positive, but because it's a structure on your property, I just wanted to make sure you were approving.
Any other board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point five, can I get a motion approving the fee waiver request from Newtown Edge Mount Little League Field, Newtown Edge Mount Little League for assigned permit totaling three hundred dollars? Any board, uh, motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point six, consider all, can I get a motion to consider authorizing the township staff and engineer to meet with the residents who will be impacted by the installation of a sidewalk on Ellis Avenue? The estimated cost of the sidewalk installation will be five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand, which we should have added in there, will be covered by a multimodal grant that we secured from our previous state representatives.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? The only thing I want to just say is again, I know that that looks like a startling number. Um, I think it was last year, uh, we received a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar multimodal grant from our then state representative, Chris Quinn for the installation. So that actually is not going to be uh expenditure of any township taxes. It'll be through that grant. Want to add anything to that? Is that okay?
Yeah, I, I would just say.
You got a good memory, don't I?
Huh?
Said I had a good memory, right?
Good memory, you, I you spit it back better than I think I said it out. So uh, uh, the, the only other thing I would make note of is we are looking at some additional sidewalk replacement uh, that we need to do anyway, uh, as part of that. And so the, we'll probably look into spend entire six fifty plus that we will then spend some township dollars uh that we had budgeted to do um the sidewalk replacement, but this is going to do much more than what we originally thought.
And this is just one piece of that puzzle of how we're trying to get connectivity between all the neighborhoods and the township.
It is, that is correct.
And it's from Westchester Pike to.
It's, it would go from, it, it would go from Westchester Pike to, is it Gallagher Avenue, Gallagher Lane, I'm with that. And at that location, we have the trail that goes through uh the park or it is people, some people call it Bishop Paulo Park. Some people call it Greer Park. Uh, not Greer, uh, Gable Park at that location. Uh, and so uh, it'll go pick up the trail at that. There'll be a crosswalk that goes across Ellis Avenue at that point. And it'll be a nice, be a nice spot transition at that way.
We're already approving the, the five.
You're not, you're, really what you're approving tonight is not even the expenditure. I wanted to make sure everybody knew what the cost was. You're, you're, what you're approving tonight is for us to meet with the residents and start doing the public process. I wanted you to know what the costs were before we did that. We'll come back once there's a final design and then that'll be what you ultimately approve before it goes out to bid.
Any other board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section thirteen is old business. There is no old business. Section fourteen is a resolution of legislation in action. Fourteen point one, can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six, compliance with Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty-two, stating the tax collector waive additional charges for real estate taxes under certain circumstances, Supervisor Chanless.
Okay, like to get a motion for the following resolution. Um. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six, resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, implementing Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty-two, which amended the local tax collection act to require tax collectors to waive additional charges for real estate taxes where notice was not received in other conditions or met. Whereas Act fifty-two of twenty twenty-two, effective October tenth, twenty twenty-two, requires each taxing authority in the Commonwealth to adopt an ordinance or resolution requiring its tax collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes under certain circumstances, beginning January first, twenty twenty-three. And whereas additional charges are defined to mean any interest, fee, penalty of charge accruing to and in excess of the face amount of the real estate tax as provided in the real estate tax notice. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown, Delaware County, the following. The tax collector of Newtown Township shall waive additional charges for real estate taxes, beginning with tax year twenty twenty-three, if the taxpayer does all of the following. A provides a waiver request of additional charges to the tax collector in possession of the claim within twelve months of the following related uh, following related to the property subject to the tax. The date of the transfer of ownership of the real property at issue or the date of transfer of ownership or the date the lease agreement commences for the original location or relocation of a mobile or manufactured home on a parcel of land not owned by the owner of the mobile or manufactured home. B attests that a tax notice was not received. C uses the standardized form developed by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for purposes of submitting the waiver request and attestation. And D provides the tax collector in possession of the claim with one of the following. A copy of the deed showing the date of real property transfer or a copy of the title following the acquisition of a mobile or manufactured home subject to taxation as real estate showing the date of issuance. Or a copy of an executed lease agreement between the owner of a mobile or manufactured home and the owner of a parcel of land on which the mobile or manufactured home will be situated, showing the date the lease commences. And E pays the face amount of the tax notice for the real estate tax with the waiver request. Tax collector who in good faith accepts a waiver request and full payment of the face amount on the real estate tax bill in accordance with this resolution shall not be personally liable for any amount due or arising from the real estate tax as a subject of the waiver request. A tax, a taxpayer that has granted a waiver and paying real estate tax as provided herein shall not be subject to an action at law or an equity for an additional charge and any claim existing or lien filed for an additional charge shall be deemed satisfied. This resolution shall become effective beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, that this twenty-seventh day, February twenty twenty-three. Is that your, that is my motion.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Um, Mr. Secor, I mean, essentially just boiled down, basically what this is, is the state passed a law that uh, if you don't get your tax bill after you buy a new home in that first year, um, the the, the, you're just paying the face value and they're wiping away the penalties. Because what happens, correct me if I'm wrong, is that sometimes people buy property they don't realize the taxes are due, it gets mixed up in that, or it goes to the prior owner. The state realizes this was an issue, pass legislation is now requiring local municipalities like ourselves to adopt an ordinance. Basically getting conformity to what that law says. Is that correct?
That's, that's right. It's, uh, it's got to be within that first year because the law is typically that you're presumed to know taxes are due. So it doesn't matter if you get a bill or not. If you're late with your taxes and pay late fees and associate costs. But if you essentially attest, you fill out a form and you swear that you did not get this bill and it's in that first year when, you know, everybody the hectic time when you're a new homeowner, uh, that is limited circumstance where it would be.
Understood. Any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point two, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh seven, adopting Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan, Supervisor Roberts.
Uh, Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan Municipal Adoption Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh seven. Whereas Newtown Township Delaware County, Pennsylvania is most vulnerable to natural and human-made hazards which may result in the loss of life and property, economic hardship and threats to public health and safety. And whereas section three two two of the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, DMA two thousand requires state and local governments to develop and submit for approval to the president, a mitigation plan that outlines processes for identifying the representative, representative, respective, sorry, natural hazards, risks and vulnerabilities. And whereas Newtown Township acknowledges the requirement of section two, three two two of DMA two thousand to have an approved hazard mitigation plan as a prerequisite to receiving post-disaster hazard mitigation grant program funds. And whereas the Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan has been developed by Delaware County Emergency Services in accordance with other county departments and officials and citizens of Newtown Township. And whereas a public involvement process consider consistent with the requirements of DMA two thousand was conducted to develop the Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And whereas the Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan recommends mitigation activities that will reduce losses to life and property affected by both natural and human-made hazards that face the county and its municipal government. Now therefore be resolved by the governing body of Newtown Township. The twenty twenty-three Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan and hereby adopted as the official hazard mitigation plan of the Newtown Township. And the respective officials and the agencies identified in the implementation strategy of the twenty twenty-three Delaware County Hazard Mitigation Plan are hereby directed to edu- uh, execute the recommended activities assigned to them. That is my, uh, adopted this twenty-seventh day of February twenty twenty-three, and that's my motion.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice or Mr. Secor, do either of you want to add anything to this?
I would just add that we, the township had lots of opportunity to be a part of the development of the plan. Uh, Gene Bale was very active in that process and helped us tremendously, tremendously in making sure that we looked at all the potential um disasters that could potentially affect Newtown Township and many of those were included. In addition, even plans to help mitigate those over the next several years. So uh, just, we were very active in the process. It's just not a counting plan that we're adopting. It's also specific to Newtown as well.
And to be clear, Dr. Gene Bale is our Director of Emergency Management, Management Services here in the town. Perfect. Any other board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Well, now that get down to section fifteen, fifteen point, uh, which is ordinances. Fifteen point one, consider approving ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two exemptions to the requirement of chapter eighty-eight, fire prevention, section eight, inspection, testing and maintenance. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, is there a second, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Any board discussion? Uh, Mr. Secor, you just want to do another quick overview of what you did before?
Sure. So uh, Pennsylvania adopted the Uniform Construction Code. Township opted in to uh enforce the Uniform Construction Code. Uh, when that was done, um, there was a process in place to allow pre-existing township code provisions that don't necessarily comply exactly with the U C C to remain in effect. One of those was Newtown had required prior to the adoption of the U C C sprinkler systems and single family residential dwelling units. And uh, the U C C does not, uh, that's kind of uh been in flux from time to time as to whether that was going to happen or not happen. And it's, it never seems to quite happen. I think the current status is that the builder for a new residence has to offer sprinkler system and, and let the purchaser either waive it or accept it. But it does, the U C C does not require single-family residents to have sprinklers. Newtown Township pre-existing code does. Uh, there was a neighborhood in our township, what was constructed out in the eighties or in uh, in Springton Point Estates where there are substantial defects in the sprinkler systems, uh, and then for a number of reasons, but uh, it's not just replacing sprinkler heads. It's actually, they used some uh homemade, uh, not the residents, but the installer, uh, used some sort of homemade uh antifreeze that corroded the entire system. Uh, they had an expert go through and do an analysis and said, look, it's, it's, you have to replace the whole system. And you know, sprinkler systems run through the entire house. So it's, it's uh essentially a huge, huge undertaking for these residents. Uh, we, our code is not only that when you build new single-family residential structure, you have to install sprinklers. Our code is that you have to maintain those sprinklers, have those sprinklers inspected. Um, when you sell your house, you got to certify that those sprinklers are working. And, and so because it was such a burden, uh, the residents kind of provided all this information to the township to consider doing something to assist and the potential solution, which was advertised as an ordinance approved for advertising as an ordinance at our last meeting, is this exemption ordinance, which is, hey, if you live in Springton Point Estates and have one of these systems, uh, you don't, you do not have to continue to operate, maintain, test and inspect that system. As long as you follow a very strict uh, series of criteria. You have to, you know, notify the fire department and get a signature on the application form that you're seeking an exemption. You got to have a central longer fire system, a, a fire alarm or smoke detection system. You have to uh disconnect the system so that it's visible to anybody looking that there is no uh, uh operable sprinkler system. You have to let people know when you're selling your house that you don't have an operating system. It's similar criteria. If you meet those criteria, you could be exempted from the, the burden of having to fix those systems. Um, and also exempted from that requirement that to sell your house, you have to pass that check that if your, your house has a sprinkler system, you request issue a permit to sell your house, you have to get, pass certain inspection criteria, which is operability of your, your sprinkler system. So there'd be an exemption to that as well. Uh, the, the impetus of passing this was this widespread problem in Springton Point Estates. But obviously the township uh realizes that there are other single-family residential dwelling units that may have been instructed in the township, not in that neighborhood, that have a similar problem. So this also provides that if you meet these certain criteria and you have somebody certified that has this problem that exceeds five thousand dollars to repair it, uh, you can apply for a similar exemption if you meet the same criteria. That's the idea. This doesn't impact commercial, this doesn't impact multifamily, uh, it doesn't impact anything that the U C C requires to have sprinklers. It's just uh, whatever the U C C does not require to have sprinklers, single-family sprinklers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Supervisor Partridge?
Yeah, so um, couple, couple of comments on there. I believe it was um, nineteen ninety or thereabouts when Newtown Township enacted this ordinance for single fam- for sprinklers in single-family homes. That's right. And my recollection from, you know, we had a lot of discussion about this and, you know, looked into it. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure that this is completely accurate, but there, but I know there's forty-nine municipalities in um, Delaware County. And I believe that I heard that Newtown Township um was the only one that had enacted an ordinance regarding single-family homes, not, not commercial. And I, I know that, um, I don't know if you, you, you know that or not, but I believe during our discussions, I believe that came up. Um, and as you said, it's not a U C C requirement. It's not something endorsed by the, by the state, right?
I don't, I know. I, I don't know the answer to uh whether most or how many don't. I know not all municipalities require it for, for sure in Delaware County and across the state. And yes, the, the state if, if we were trying to do this and the, this requirement was in the U C C, we wouldn't just be able to do this. We, there'd be other additional steps and we have to show some sort of get approval for some equivalent, but that's not the case. This is not required by the U C C at this time.
Yep.
Any other board discussion? Saw Mr. Lancelot is sort of walking towards the podium since I broke from my uh, my uh, schedule. I'll, I'll make another exception for this or exception for this. Mr. Loicono, actually, excuse, too many, have too many vowels in this room tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, my name is Anthony Loicono. I'm a, I live at two Hempstead Road. And uh, long-term resident in Newtown Township. I want to personally thank the board for giving uh us the opportunity to present to you. Uh, I myself and, and the president of the Springton Point Estates Homeowners Association. And since August of twenty twenty-one, we have been working um diligently as the board to present our, kind of our issues to you in a very detailed manner. Our initial presentation, if you recall, you shot it down and sent it back to us where we had to regroup and present to you our case in greater detail. So I want to thank everyone on the board for serving us and hearing us and listening. Um, and again, I think a hundred and sixteen homeowners uh, of Springton Point Estates, uh, greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, one, one of the things that the township wanted to ensure was for homes that were constructed with sprinklers. What other U C C provisions did uh they take advantage of for constructing a home with sprinklers? Meaning that if you knew you were building a home without sprinklers, there may be certain things that you would have had to build a different way. So the township really wanted to take a, a hard look at that. I think the only thing that really came to light was the which, which is in here, uh, you have to fire-rated floors. Uh, so if your, your basement has to have a certain fire-rated protection for the, for the floor. Didn't have a sprinkler system. So that's one of the criteria. So it, it did take a little while, but we got through it.
My name's Jim Lancelotto. I live at thirty-four Heather Way. I'm also on the board of the um.
uh, Springton Point Estates Homeowners Association. Uh, I've been in the town for twenty-five years, like many of us in this room have since we built these houses. I want to thank you again, as I said two weeks ago, for considering this. And I think this has been a, a very good, uh, joint approach to it. For example, uh, when we were all trying to figure out the best approach to this, uh, the board listening to our request to make sure every house had a centrally installed a fire alarm. So there, if there was an issue for a house, it would be directly lined into the fire department as opposed to just smoke detectors. So we appreciate the fact that as, as Anthony said, everybody listened to each other. Because this is a, this is a community issue. It's not just a neighborhood issue for us. There are at least a half dozen other communities that were built at about the same time that had the same issue. Uh, that unfortunately have to deal with the same problems and concerns and damage and a lot of financial issues as well. So again, thank you, not only for us and our community, but also everyone else who's had to face this.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sure, come on up.
Raymond Locos, twenty-two old forest root. I read the ordinance today and I have some questions or a question to the township. I don't have any skin in the game. My system's up and running, it's been up and running. I consider it a safety issue for my family, my pets and the property. So I plan to keep the system running for as long as I'm living in the township. Um, maybe some other people are aware from our I don't understand the cost of repairing the system in five thousand dollars. So it, it seems like I'm reading this for the first time. Other people have been to the meetings before. If it's under five thousand dollars, the cost of repair, you have to repair the system with this ordinance. If it's over five thousand, then you don't. So. Is that correct?
Uh, so I'm not going to do a, a public back and forth, not a question and answer, as you know, right? This is a public comment. I will allow this one exemption. I'll let the solicitor answer that. But outside of that, you know, I think it's just beneficial that we just allow you to do your public comment like everyone else. And we're not going to do a, uh, a public question and answer, which is consistent to how I've always run any public comment. But Mr. Secor. Answer is yes.
Spring to points estates has already conducted kind of a, a survey, uh, with an expert. They don't have to do that, but other houses as they come in would have to demonstrate that five thousand.
And this is a defect in the materials we've used in this, this particular housing development. This is material is defective.
Yeah.
So the whole system after replaced in somebody's house would be probably forty, fifty thousand dollars. It's not, it's not just going to fix a valve or going to fix one piece of pipe. It's the whole system's defective.
Yeah, more, the more modern systems don't have this problem. So anything that's been constructed more recently, it's really not going to be most likely an issue. I guess anybody could have a bad install.
Thank you. Twenty-two old forest root.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I believe the motion was made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now move down to section sixteen, which is board comment. Do any board members have anything that they'd like to add? Seeing none, we'll move down to public comment. Public comment is for anything that's not on the agenda or on the agenda. Anything that you have that comes to your mind, you can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.